I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, December 11, 2013. And can we get members present? Time is 6:39.
Joseph Waters.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Joseph Otidy.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here. And we have a very special guest here tonight for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Adam Duran. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is installation of board members.
Yes, so earlier this month, I received certificates from Mark Church, the Elections Officer at the county, certifying the election of our three board members to be installed tonight. We have a certificate from Mrs. Marie Brizuela, and Dr. Rebecca Douglas, and Mr. Joseph Waters. So we'll all hand them their certificate when they come up to say their oath. Okay, so we're gonna start with Mrs. Marie Brizuela, and she's being sworn in by San Mateo County Supervisor, Ms. Adrienne Tissier. Here or the other side?
What way to go down?
Do you have the... Well, first off, while Marie is coming down, I wanted to just say a few words about Marie. I've known Marie since I was a teenager. I grew up here in Daly City, and I was involved in a lot of things with Our Lady of Mercy Church and school, and she was always, 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 as you know, involved in everything. And I mean everything. So when they put on a fashion show, Marie was behind the entire thing. So she also, I had asked her today if she would send me a little something, just to refresh my memory a little bit about some of the things she's done. It's about ten pages. And I said, "Could you give me the abridge photo?" But I say that because Marie has been involved in so many things here in our county, and she was elected to your school board here in 1981. So she served for thirty-two years and is now going into her ninth term. And during that time, she's also worked and had a business, a dance studio. She also worked for the fire department, and she was very involved at the time with the fire department when they did the Learn to Burn project. And because of that project that she worked so heavily on, a young first grader actually saved her family because of it. So Marie always went above and beyond the call of duty in everything she did. She sat on the Daly City Colma Democratic Club, the Broadmoor Properties Association, Friends of the Library, she's been on this board, she's been on the History Guild, she's been with the PTA. I mean, she just doesn't stop. And that's really what you're looking for when you're looking for a great board member. And I'm proud to be the one here today, this evening, to be able to swear Marie in and thank her for all the great work she's done so far. And I know in these next four years, she won't stop. And that's what we love about you, Marie. So if you will, if you will do me a favor and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I.
I. Marie Brizuela.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
And I will always.
And I will always.
Say nice things.
Say nice things.
About my county supervisor. Congratulations.
Thank you. Let's thank Adrienne Tissier for coming this evening to install me, and thank all of those that helped with our campaign, helping all three of us to come back on this board, and not back for Mr. Waters, but his first term. And to, I wanted to say a very big thank you to my husband. Sometimes he gets to be at the end of the conversation, and sometimes we forget, but I just want to say, Robert, thank you so much for the thirty-two years that you have supported me, and that he's been not just a supportive person to allow me to do this, but he's been there helping us many times, and many of you have met him at school or different places, where he gets in and does the caring, bringing things, and he just is there, not only in mental support, but physical support. And for my family that was so caring, they were young when I first started, but they were right there helping and they were right there supporting me. And I also want to thank all the teachers that have helped with this campaign throughout the years, and how welcoming they have been when I go into their classrooms, or when I'm trying to support a program they have. I also want to say that some of the things that we have, that I have been able to do, that I'd like to let some of you know, is that being on the Friends of the Library gave me an opportunity to obtain a $10,000 grant to help with field trips for the fourth graders going to the ceremony library where they were learning about ecology. It brought, it brought books to the school libraries, as well as the public libraries, and we were able to work with the city. I want to thank the City of Daly City and all the council people. I see Carol Clatt is here, and I see David Canepa. Is anybody else? No? Nobody else? Anyway, all of you have been granted when I've been able to work with you on the committees, which brought the junior giants to our schools. It also helped us build our gymnasiums as partners. And for all of the things that they have supported with the libraries, and anything that we have asked them for, they have been there to help us, including the city manager, Pat Martel. And I also wanted to let some of you know that some of you might not have known, that several years back, we started a foundation called the Tim Herbert Foundation at Ben Franklin School, and it was for the library, where we raised something like $12,000 for books for the library and for other projects to help them with the library. And it was to honor Tom, Tim Herbert, who was a student at Ben Franklin, went on to Westmore, and then was, went on to graduate from West Point and became a physician. What was so important about this man, that he was totally an educator, deep down, from the beginning to the end. And he also was the first Filipino student or family that lived in Broadmoor Village and attended our schools. So that was a real plus. Many of our Filipino community members came to support that event, and we were very proud of that. So not to say a whole lot more than to say, thank you, everybody, for all you've done. I see a lot of my friends in the audience, some people that have helped. I especially thank Natty Fong, who's been very helpful with PTA, all the way up to state PTA, and still comes back to help our district. And she was, not officially, but darn, she had to be my campaign manager, because she was there every minute, helping me through this whole ordeal. And I want to thank you so much for that. And I don't want to take a lot, a lot of time, but I want to thank Jackie Spear for all the guidance she gave me when I worked in her office. I want to thank Leland Yi for thinking that I could do anything I set out to do, and gave me the honor of being Assemblywoman of the Year, and I appreciate that very, very much. And for Tom Lantus, who's not with us physically anymore, for all the help that he gave me when I would volunteer as a, the aid, for governmental aid for the County School Board Association. So for, there are many things to do, you guys on the board. It's not just sitting here on the board at a meeting twice a month. It's getting involved, not only with our schools and our children and our community, but also countywide, statewide, all that we can do to make our district the best. And I'm looking forward to four years of yay, good work, okay? And I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Thanks, Ms. Brizuela. Now, we'd like to recognize several people in the audience. Wayne Johnson of the Broadmoor Police. Jeff Adachi, San Francisco Public Defender. Mary Ann Petroni, former board member of our district. Francis Lopez, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Adrienne Tissier Supervisor. Carol Clatt, Vice Mayor of our city. Sonia Reyes, Personnel Commissioner. Adam Duran, former board member. Mateo Rizzle, former superintendent. Dennis Shreve, Personnel Commissioner. Claudia Lopez, Representative from Senator Yi's office. And of course, Senator Leland Yi. Melinda Dart, President of AFT 3267. All the AFT 3267 members as well. All right, that's true. CSEA members as well. All right, we want to also recognize all the cabinet members. We have Sandy McCullic. All right, we have Maurice Goodman, South San Francisco School Board. LaShonda Small, former board member. Kathy Shaddix, former CSEA President. Annette Hippona, City Clerk. And our newly elected mayor, David Canepa. Amy Moore, Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. Hopefully, we didn't miss anyone.
I just want to say thank you, because I know she's gonna kill me later. My sister, Kathy Shaddix, thank you for coming down from Lincoln to help me with my election. You always forget someone that's closer to you. I'm sorry. And also to Melinda Dart, because she's very special.
All right, we also have Rick Young, our Facilities Manager. And Brenda Smith, our Director of Special Ed.
So as we get ready, Dr. Douglas, you will be next, so come forward.
All right, one more. Adrienne Zanini, former AFT President.
And Dr. Douglas will be sworn in by retiring board member Hans Hansen.
I.
I, Rebecca Douglas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
And I promise to smile more.
That I guess it's my turn to say thank you to some very important people. First of whom would be my husband, Dave Dempsey, sitting in the back hiding. All of his support in all that I do. I would also like to thank my campaign manager, Rosie Tejada, although I'm not sure she made it, because her daughter had a play rehearsal tonight. But I do want to make sure that Rosie is duly thanked for an immense amount of work that she put into helping with, me with my campaign. And thanks also to all of the parents, teachers, and staff who helped to work on the campaign. It's greatly appreciated. Know that you're, you're thanked. And that's all I wish to say. Thank you.
And next, we welcome Mr. Waters, our newest board member, and he will be sworn in by public, San Francisco City and County Public Defender, Mr. Jeff Adachi.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am so honored to be here on behalf of Joseph Waters. Now, you might be wondering why the public defender. But actually, Joe's a man of many talents, and he's my trainer at Belly's Gym. He's also a great ballroom dancer. He's a college professor, and now he's gonna be on the school board. You know, when Joe told me that he was gonna run, and anyone who's run for office is gonna tell you this, it's a crazy process, and it's so hard, particularly to win the first time, but he had a secret weapon. He had Melinda, who also goes to the gym. A lot of the strategy was thought up there.
That's good.
And what motivated Joe to run was his family. Amanda's here with, with three of their children. But also, the fact that he was having an issue with the school district, and he said, "You know, I need to do something about it." And I said, "Well, what are you gonna do about it?" He said, "Go talk to the superintendent. There's a lot of things that you can do." And he said, "Well, I'm gonna run for the school board." And he did it, and he won. It's a, it's a huge responsibility. Superintendent Vidalis is telling me you're now responsible for working with 6,300 students and parents and teachers. But we know that you're gonna do a great job. So the only thing that's left to do is to take the oath. So, I.
I, Joseph Waters.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And your friends have a book to present to you, Advancing Student Achievement, so...
Okay, that was kind of overwhelming, in a good way. First, I want to, first and foremost, say thank you to the lady who agreed to be my wife, Amanda, sitting right over there. Thank you so much. She's the person behind. You guys see me, but she's behind the scenes, and why I'm always looking so put together as her. And she's my motivator. Other people I want to thank are the three boys in the back, LJ, little Joseph, Elias, Rowan. They were always there to help me campaign, even though they didn't want to. You know, thank you, guys. A few more people I'd like to mention who mentored me throughout this whole process. Maurice Goodman, good friend of mine from childhood. Jeff and Melinda, I torture you guys on a regular basis. And you still, you still help me out. Thank you. Appreciate it. And next is, I see many people in here who have supported me, just blindly, and got to know me, and stood behind me, one of which, David Canepa, Mayor. Thank you. Appreciate it. And I see teachers, I see people who've been in my exercise class, who've, I've tortured and still supported me. Thank you, Jen. Lisa, so, thanks, everybody, for all the support. I look forward to an excellent four years. Thanks.
I also have certificates here from Senator Mark Leno's office for each of our new elected board members. And Mr. Ron Appel, who's the, who's a Personnel Commissioner, wanted me to extend his apologies for not being able to be here. He's a practice at a band concert performance, and he wants to extend his congratulations to Mrs. Brizuela and Dr. Douglas on their reelection, and congratulations to Mr. Waters for being, for winning the election for board member. And also to Mr. Hans Hansen on his retirement as a board member to the school district. So, that's for Mr. Appel. So this is, the next highlight of the evening is an opportunity to recognize Mr. Hans Hansen for his many years of service to the school district. And so, Mr. Hansen, if you would come forward. We're gonna start. So, I'll start, and Ms. McCullic, if you would help me with a special gift.
We have a plaque recognizing you for the years of service to the school district.
Thank you.
And we have a little hen holder. That's her name. We go for you. And of course, a little bouquet of flowers. If you would bring much heat and warmth into our lives.
All right, so now we will call Supervisor Adrienne Tissier. She has a resolution.
Don't stray too far, Hans. This is sort of like deja vu for me a little bit. I feel like I've been here, done that. Anyway, normally, I wouldn't read a resolution, because I don't want to put everybody to sleep, but this one won't put you to sleep. And I really want people to hear a little bit more about Hans. And so, over the course of nearly three decades as a member of this school board, Hans has provided outstanding public service and worked tirelessly for the students and families that reside in the City of Daly City, the town of Colma, Broadmoor Village, and the City of Pacifica. He began his service in the area of public education as an active parent and member of Daly City's Westlake Elementary School PTA, where he advocated for improved services and championed an effort to renovate the school playground for future generations. Hans, having gained considerable skills as an effective parent advocate and successful businessman, decided to run for public office and was first elected to the school board in 1985, where he served until 2001. I think you probably have that plaque hanging on your wall for me then, too. He was reelected to the Jefferson Elementary School District Board of Trustees in 2005, because we absolutely wanted him back. That's not in here, but I'm just ad-libbing a little bit for you. And served until his retirement on December 11, 2013, which is today. He is recognized by his peers as a team player and a natural leader, having collaborated with fellow trustees and the district superintendent to improve Jefferson Elementary School District's finances. He worked to ensure that all students were provided with quality educational services, including students with special, special education needs and gate students, and fought to expand access to extracurricular activities, including music and vocational classes. He's made a significant contribution to the improvement of the Jefferson Elementary School District, and is recognized that district parents and students have been well-served under his leadership. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of San Mateo County commends Hans Hansen for his work with the Jefferson Elementary School District, and hereby expresses its gratitude and extends sincere wishes for many more years of health, success, and happiness. And I always notice when someone retires, they always have the biggest smile on their face. And look at that guy right there. Come on up, Hans. Let me present this to you.
Now, Mayor David Canepa.
First, let me just say, I'm absolutely delighted to be before you. I mean, you got Jeff Adachi from San Francisco, you got Adrienne Tissier from San Mateo County, and Adam Duran, I guess, came from Las Vegas, so. Good to see you, former school, former school board member. I'm delighted to be here. First, let me just preface my comments by saying, thank you, Bernie, for your leadership. The school district continues to do well. To the school board, tremendous amount of experience. Marie Brizuela, I've known for a very long time, Shaquille, Joe Otidy, Rebecca, and now you, Mr. Waters. And so, looking for a lot of good things coming from this board. And I also want to recognize someone who doesn't get recognized, because she's always here in the corner. Can we give a round of applause for Ms. Colby Ray? Thank you for all you do, and I'm not just saying that because you're a Daly City resident, but you're, you're a great person. So I do want to recognize, and I think it's, we should note, we have, with the school board, you need different advocacy groups, and I do want to recognize Melinda Dart for all the work you do, advocating on behalf of teachers. And then I also want to recognize those employees, recognize CSEA. But with that, Hans Hansen, come up here. I'm not gonna swear you in. So on behalf of the City of Daly City, I'm just gonna read a couple of these phrases, but I do want to tell you, in the City of Daly City, this is my first certificate as mayor, it's Hans Hansen Day in the City of Daly City, so congratulations. So congratulations. So with that, I'll just read this. It says, Hans Hansen, recognition of your dedicated service as a trustee for the Jefferson Elementary School District Board from 1985 to 2001, and subsequently being reelected in 2005. During your tenure, you have distinguished yourself by serving on several board committees, such as the budget and facilities, board policies, and the city of Daly City, Jefferson Elementary School District. So on this date, awarded, the 11th day of December, 2013, I want to congratulate you for your service and wish you all the best. Congratulations.
Next, we have Senator Li Ling Yi or Claudia Lopez. All right, there we go.
We would actually like to recognize the senator was just here, as you noticed, but he has to run, like always. We would like to recognize you, Hans, for all you do, the work that you put in for Daly City. The public service, as we all know, takes a lot of time, effort, and more than anything, a lot of love. So thank you for everything you do and appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
And I have two final certificates, one from Senator Mark Leno and another one from Congresswoman Jackie Speer. And she had this made up for you, and I had to, I got to personally go and pick it up.
Something written here.
Just stand over here.
Okay, yeah. Hans, I want to offer my congratulations to you on your retirement. You were, oh, I worked, I served on the school board for eight years. And he was always a gentleman and always acted in a professional manner, even though we had our differences sometimes. But he had one thing, and that one thing that really stood out and we both agreed on, he was there for the school district, whatever was best for the school district. And that meant not only the buildings and so on, but for the staff, the children, and the community. Today, you leave the district, but there's so much that you've accomplished on, you're at the top of your game. I mean, the passing of the bond. Oh, my goodness. That's a wonderful thing. You helped to secure the district for so many years, as well as just, I heard, or saw, finalizing the Christopher Columbus site, which started, you know, when I was on the board, that took a lot of patience and hard work. You leave with a physically sound, but physically sound budget, raises for all the staff, including the superintendent and even the board and the administrative staff. When I was on, we had to, we had, we cut down a little bit because we had to. What a way to retire. You will always be appreciated for giving so many years of your time, time from your family, Sharon, and the children, and the grandchildren. You're always giving perspective to what was, what is, and what could be. So good luck to you and your wife, Sharon. And once again, congratulations to a job well done.
Well, I don't have a certificate or a proclamation, but I could go and make one, if that would make you feel better. Hans, I just wanted to briefly just come up and say thank you so much. When I served on the school board, I just recall that you were so incredibly just thoughtful and so compassionate and so nurturing, I think, of me as a new board member. I deeply appreciate your integrity. I deeply appreciate your sincerity and your ability to sort of cut to the chase, which was always needed. I appreciate your humor and your thoughtfulness so much. And I just recall that, you know, you were definitely vested in making sure that the district was successful, fiscally above, I think, all else. And that was very, I think, important to have on the board. And I recall that when Mrs. Petroni retired from the board, you wrote a poem for her. And I thought that was very nice to remember that. And so, I wanted to write one, too, but, and I tried to channel my inner poet, but she didn't seem to be available to me today. So I just instead came up with this very simple, so listen, or you're going to miss it. Roses are red and violets are blue. Our students are better because of you. That's it.
Guess I'll go to these in order. Sandra Dieter and Natty Fong, together? One of you.
Hi, I'm Natty Fong. I'm with the Jefferson Council PTA. And we, I was gonna give a bit for Mr. Hansen. The California State PTA has an honorary service award program, and we have made a donation in your honor to that fund. And that fund funds scholarships for graduating high school seniors, continuing education for volunteers and teachers and school nurses. So in honor of your years of dedication to the children and families of the Jefferson Council of PTAs, a donation in your honor has been given to the HSA program. And that means that you get invited to our annual honorary service award tea.
Good evening, board members and everybody else, and good evening, Hans Hansen. First of all, I want to thank you for your 24 years of service. It's a long time, and to go and to come back again, knowing what you did, you know, is really quite commendable. But what I would like to really say is that I think your sense of decorum and your courtesy, reaching out to everybody, has always defined you. You were all about cooperation, conciliation, and mediation, finding the middle road amongst all board members. For you, it wasn't about power or what was best for you. It was about what was best for the district, what was best for the children, what was best for the employees. And I want to thank you so much. I enjoyed working with you, and you deserve a retirement. It's really pretty good.
Before I call the next speaker, I want to recognize a couple more people in the audience. Paul Hagan, former AFT president. I saw over there somewhere, Pat Bohm, executive director of the Daly City Partnership. I saw her. All right, Melinda Dart.
Good evening. And I do want to take this opportunity to thank Hans for his years of service. Some of you have already heard that Hans first retired from the board in 2001, and then Hans actually came to us teachers and asked if he could, if we would like him to run again because our district was in trouble at the time. And I went through some of my archives, and I found some old stuff, Hans, but I'm just going to read this little piece from it. We teachers were asking the citizens of Daly City to support Hans in the election, and we said he has a proven track record. He has had sold surplus property, raised over $10 million, improved maintenance of schools, achieved fiscal solvency, started high-quality, low-cost childcare, improved student attendance, promoted respect for all, and collaborated with educators to raise student achievement, all of which is still true, of course. But on top of that, most recently, he helped pass Measure I, the bond for our district. He was a driving force in the sale of the Christopher Columbus property. And in spite of the fact that we sometimes didn't see completely eye to eye over the budget, Hans and I, he's going out on a very high note, wouldn't you agree, teachers? Because he has helped all our employees have a 6% raise this fall. So we really want to thank you for all that, Hans. And we know that you're going to really enjoy having your Wednesday nights back, though. And we have a card for you, and somewhere out here, we have a plant. Oh, here it comes.
Thank you.
Now we'll have, so now we'll allow the cabinet members to give recognition to Mr.
Hans, I would like to thank you again. It's been a pleasure working with you. As everyone has said, you're someone who really puts the best interest of the students, staff, and the whole community, you know, first. And you're really, really appreciative. We're going to miss you very much. So congratulations and enjoy.
I haven't known you all that long, but in the time I've known you, I have really appreciated your thoughtful questions and your sense of humor. I'll always remember those barn owls and, but I just want to congratulate you and thank you for your service on the board, and we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Hans, I've worked with you for three years now, and we're ending three years now. And you've always been a voice of reason with the budget, and you have understood it, and you've worked well with me on it. And every step of the way, you always looked for what was best for the district, the children, and the staff. And congratulations. Enjoy all the, this time you'll be spending in Hawaii and Mexico, no doubt, and we'll miss you.
Hans, many of these words have been said before, and I think they're just a testament to the legacy that you leave. For 26 years, that you've served our district with integrity, financial acumen, values that underscored the need to provide the best possible experience for all our students. I've only had five and a half years working under your leadership, but I've appreciated every word of wisdom you've shared. You've approached your position with humility and an attitude of service that never seeks personal promotion or regard. I will miss you on our board, and I wish you the best in your retirement.
All right, Adam Durand, would you like to have a word?
Sorry, I didn't
Do a speaker card.
Not used to be on this side of the dice. So I just want to say that when I first came, when I first decided to run for the board, it was Hans, one of the people that I met with. He actually came to my house, and he ran down a list of things that I would have to be willing to do to run in an election. And when he left, I looked at my wife and said, I ain't doing this. But I changed my mind, and I'm glad I did. It was an honor to work with you, Hans. Even if we didn't agree on everything eye to eye, you and I could sit and talk and work on our differences to come to a compromise. I always appreciate your opinion. I appreciate it, the day I colored my hair blue and you wore your wig to support me, to support Danny Webster, when they raised the money. That, yeah, that's right, that's right. Because I was a little nervous, and it was kind of, we had a little ruckus group that night, too, I believe, with Ms. Melinda Dart. But I just want to say thank you. I appreciate your friendship. I appreciate your advice, your, and your support upon the board. So thank you very much, Hans.
I don't have a form. I don't have a form. I'm Kathy Shannix, for those who are new. I retired three years ago. Beat you. And when I came into the lobby, the first thing, no names mentioned, was, oh, we missed you, and are you going to speak tonight? Because I was known as the one that spoke to almost every single item. And sometimes Hans agreed with me, and sometimes he didn't. But we had a good relationship, never got angry at each other. And he knew that I was the big challenge, and I would always come and speak. There's my other challenger. But, you know, it's nice to come back, and they all have hugs for you. And I was a big supporter of CSA, of course, and met with teachers as well, and we came to some great togetherness. And I think that's when the district recognized all the employees. I wish you lots of luck.
All right, thanks. She was always cute. We're board members. All right. I'm going to go this way. I'm not going to start.
This is like a Quaker religious experience because when you're, when you're in the room with the rest of the group, you don't speak unless your spirit moves you to speak. And I hadn't planned to speak, but let me just say that I really enjoyed our time together. It was a lot of fun, and you were a great leader, a great person to work for. Remember going to PTA meetings and sitting at the table with you? And when I was a, before I became, oh, no, it was the first time around, your first terms. And then, as superintendent, as I spent my last three, my 40 years as superintendent, it didn't seem like work because of the board members that I worked with, everyone working together for common goals. It, as I used to say to Adam, there is no finer drug than being superintendent. It was just, it was always just a real fun, emotional experience in the district. For Bernie, I don't know what he's going to say. But thank you for being part of my professional life. I really appreciate it, and you did much good for the district. And I always liked your focus on the financial side of things. And maybe we'll talk a little bit about the value of the dollar once this meeting is over. But thank you very much, Mr. Hansen.
Is it my turn? Almost. Now we have recognition from board members.
Me? Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. Hans, I want to congratulate you on your retirement, second time. No. And I would like to just say that I guess I served the longest time with you. And Hans came on four years after I did. And at that time, our budget needed some overhaul, and we ended up hiring Mr. Digi Ronamo. And he came on, and before you know it, we were giving, what, 8% or 9% raises to our teachers and stuff and employees, and it was great. So you did have a great view of the budget and always was there to work for that. I appreciate that. There's a lot of things about Hans that some of you may not know that he has done. One was that CSBA, that's the state organization, but locally, we have the San Mateo County School Board Association. And so, he got involved with that. And he served on legislative committee and wanted to write a